Good evening. Would you like to call an order to the meeting of Belburg City Council, Monday, June 24th, 2019? We'd stand for a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pam, we'd call the law.
Mr. Edwards.
Here.
Mr. Greenwood.
Here.
Mr. McGill.
Here.
Mrs. Mittelstetter.
Here.
Mayor Schwaler.
Here. We have a motion to excuse Councilwoman Sigur Lawson.
So moves Mayor.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
A motion was made by Mr. McGill to excuse Mrs. Sigur Lawson from tonight's meeting. This was seconded by Mr. Greenwood. Mr. McGill.
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood.
Yes.
Mr. Edwards.
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter.
Yes.
Mayor Schwaler.
Yes. Does any member of council have any corrections or additions to the regular city council meeting minutes of the last meeting?
None.
No mayor.
Seeing none, the minutes are approved as written. Next item up is the mayor's announcements, and for those of you who don't know, I am going to be the new mayor of the city of Belburg through December 31st, 2019. Mayor Bob Barrett moved outside the city limits, and so by charter, he's no longer allowed to serve, so I'm going to complete his remaining unexpired term. I'm very happy to be here. I look forward to continuing some of the things that Bob Barrett had started when he was here to keep us on that same path moving forward, and I plan to be on the ballot in November of 2019, running for a full term. Next on the agenda, we have public hearing of ordinances, ordinance number 2019-12. Mr. Greenwood.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 2019-12, an ordinance modifying Section 1042.07, operation fees of the Belburg Municipal Code. Whereas, the Belburg Municipal Code has established operation fees for city water services outlined in Section 1042.07, and whereas, the last revision to water operation fees was in 2002, and whereas, city staff recommends these operation fees be updated to better cover costs incurred. Now therefore, the city of Belburg hereby ordains, Section 1, that the following amendment to Section 1042.07 of the Belburg Municipal Code be approved with deletions shown by strike through and additions shown by italics and underline. Section 1, operation fees are hereby established as follows. Non-payment shut off, $30, that's a turn off and turn on. Non-payment, turn on after hours, went from $60 to $90. Shut off and turn on at meter pit during working hours upon request for maintenance purposes, went from $20 to $30. Shut off and turn on at meter pit during non-working hours upon request for maintenance purposes, went from $60 to $90. Visit to install or inspect new water service following two visits, made at no charge to the builder. Vacation shut off and/or storage of meter upon customer request, monthly minimums all you'd be charged. Damaged meter repair, cost including labor. Damaged fire hydrant, cost including labor. Shut off at main upon request for maintenance or violation, cost including labor, return check fee $30. Section 2, that this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law.
So just a few minor changes. It said non-payment shut off, and it never said turn on, so it's shut off and turn on, so we added that terminology. Under B, non-payment, turn on after hours went from $60 to $90, just because those service folks are called in, and it's a three-hour minimum that they get based on our personnel policy manual, so that's just to bring that a little bit more in line with actual costs. And then, shut off and turn on went from $20 to $30 during working hours, so that just made it exactly the same cost as A, which made more sense. And then, D, again, shut off and turn on at meter pit during non-working hours, again, went from $60 to $90 to be in line with the other non-payment after hours, turn on. So those were the only changes that were made, so minor, but made sense.
Do these hourly rates line up with the hourly rates we pay our employees to do these services and provide for the overtime and so forth?
They do.
This is a public hearing. Any discussion on council?
The damaged fire hydrant, would that be, let's say there was an accident and they knocked one off, do we go insurance, their insurance, or is that?
We would send, we would send the person a bill, and then it would be up to them to determine whether or not they could turn that in. Depending on the circumstances, that would be up to them to determine how they might get that covered, so.
That would probably be in a police report, who was at fault or whatever.
Yes.
Go to the person who damaged it, not the property owner.
Correct, yes.
I think they go to whoever's guilty, whoever's responsible for the accident, and they would assess them for the meter, just like if you hit a telephone pole or something like that as well.
Because I know those fire hydrants, that's a pretty expensive job.
Got it.
And sometimes if charges are pressed, you know, there's more involved than that, that would just get folded in, part of their penalty.
That's all I have.
Any other comments, discussion? Given this is a public hearing, does anybody in the audience care to speak out with regard to ordinance 2019-12? Hearing none, I declare this hearing closed. We have a motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2019-12.
Second.
Second. Daryl.
Mr. Greenwood made a motion to adopt ordinance 2019-12, an ordinance modifying Section 1042.07, operation fees of the Belburg Municipal Code. This was seconded by Mr. McGill. Mr. Greenwood.
Yes.
Mr. McGill.
Yes.
Mr. Edwards.
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter.
Yes.
Mayor Schwaler.
Yes. Next on the agenda is an introduction of ordinance, ordinance number 2019-13. Mr. Edwards.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 2019-13, an ordinance authorizing the city manager/finance director to submit the tax budget for fiscal year 2020 to the Green County Auditor. Whereas, the city is required to prepare and submit the tax budget for 2020 to the Green County Auditor no later than July 20th, 2019, following a public hearing. Now therefore, the city of Belburg hereby ordains, Section 1, that the tax budget for fiscal year 2020, as attached here to, be approved for the submission to the Green County Auditor to guarantee the city's eligibility for the allocation of local government funds in 2020. This ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law. Looks like this is something that we do every year to send to the county. On the last page, it shows total available for expenditures of $6,248,860, for a total expenses of $2,675,249, with estimated unencumbered balance at the end of this year of $3,573,611. End of next year, I'm sorry.
This is kind of the first pass at the budget, is it not, Melissa?
It is. So this is the first look at where we will end 2019 and what we project for 2020. So the county gives us the numbers to be plugged in for property taxes for 2020, the rest of it's just estimation, so this just demonstrates our need for the property taxes that we collect. So this will also, once this is submitted, which it has to be submitted by July 20th, this will serve as our first certificate of estimated resources that we'll use for 2020. So we'll amend that after the first of the year, but this is, that's where this comes from, so.
We've already sort of got advances on the 2019 real estate taxes, correct?
Correct, yes.
The second batch, I think, the second batch due July?
Yep. We normally...
Fourteenth, fifteenth, or something.
Yeah. Just got mine the other day. February and August.
Any more discussion on ordinance 2019-13? If not, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance number 2019-13.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
A motion was made by Mr. Edwards to introduce ordinance 2019-13, an ordinance authorizing the city manager/finance director to submit the tax budget for fiscal year 2020 to the Green County Auditor. This was seconded by Mrs. Mittelstetter. Mr. Edwards.
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter.
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood.
Yes.
Mr. McGill.
Yes.
Mayor Schwaler.
Yes. Thank you. Tonight, we do have two resolutions. First, resolution 2019-P, Mr. McGill.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number 2019-P, city of Belburg, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Belburg Sugar Creek Local School District for school security. Whereas, the Belburg Sugar Creek Local School District has requested that Belburg Police Department continue its increased presence at the schools within the city limits beyond its normal patrol, and whereas, the city, school district agreed to compensate the city for this increased presence, and whereas, the agreement will be effective for the 2019-2020 school year. Now therefore, the city of Belburg hereby resolves, Section 1, that the city manager is hereby authorized to execute the attached agreement with the Belburg Sugar Creek Local School District. Section 2, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith. There's an agreement attached to this. I'm not going to read through the majority of it, but I will say that it's in similar fashion to what we've done in the past with the school system for requesting our presence there at various times throughout the school year. And the buildings that they patrol are the Sugar Creek Educational Center, School Administrative Building, Bell Creek Intermediate School, Belburg Sugar Creek Transportation Office on request, Sugar Creek Elementary, Stephen Bell Elementary School, and other school buildings on an ad needed basis, and those are just in the city, confined to the city of Belburg itself.
So no changes from last year to this year. So that is a minimum of four hours, and that's split between any of those locations that Mr. McGill just outlined, and the total cost for that is $16,500 for the school year, so I kept that exactly the same. So those aren't overtime hours, they're always filled by officers that we already have on duty, so.
Do our policemen enjoy this kind of work as much as they think they do?
They do.
Good for them.
They look forward to Stephen Bell every morning, absolutely.
Yeah.
I'm used to seeing the chief walking up and down Main Street, upward or Franklin Street, upward the elementary school, which is a pretty decent little hike. Okay, any more discussion on resolution 2019-P? If not, can I have a motion?
I have a motion to accept resolution number 2019-P, please.
You have a second?
I'll second.
A motion was made by Mr. McGill to adopt resolution 2019-P, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Belburg Sugar Creek Local School District for school security. This was seconded by Mr. Edwards. Mr. McGill.
Yes.
Mr. Edwards.
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter.
Yes.
Mayor Schwaler.
Yes. Next up is resolution 2019-Q. Mrs. Mittelstetter.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, resolution 2019-Q, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Belburg Sugar Creek Local School District for security at home football games. Whereas, the Belburg Sugar Creek Local School District has requested that the Belburg Police Department provide police officers in an extra duty capacity at Belburg High School home football games. And whereas, the school district agreed to compensate the city for this extra duty, and whereas, the agreement will be effective for the 2019 home football season. Now therefore, the city of Belburg hereby resolves, Section 1, that the city manager is hereby authorized to execute the attached agreement with the Belburg Sugar Creek Local School District. Section 2, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith.
Thank you.
Same agreement as years past, no changes in cost, and there are four home games this year, so that's what it's for.
You guys enjoy their work and like going out there and all that.
They do, yeah.
Okay, good. Any more discussion on resolution 2019-Q? If I could have a motion, please?
Yes, I move for the adoption of resolution 2019-Q.
You have a second?
Second.
A motion was made by Mrs. Mittelstetter to adopt the resolution 2019-Q, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Belburg Sugar Creek Local School District for security at home football games. This was seconded by Mr. McGill. Mrs. Mittelstetter.
Yes.
Mr. McGill.
Yes.
Mr. Edwards.
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood.
Yes.
Mayor Schwaler.
Yes. That concludes our legislation for tonight. Next up on the agenda is our city manager report.
Okay. So our 2018 draft audit report is complete, and there were no issues or citations, so that was great. This has been a very smooth process. They were in and out very quickly, so that's good. So they will disseminate that to council. I think I already did that. I need to double check. So once everybody's had a chance to review that, then it will be, the financial statements will be considered audited, and then they will be placed on our website for public review. I would like for everybody to mark their calendars for our downtown assessment recommendations presentation. That's going to occur on July 18th. He had earmarked July 11th, and I realized that that was another school board meeting, so not making the same mistake twice, so now it's July 18th. So that's going to be a Thursday, and I'm going to recommend a similar evening as what happened on Thursday. So I think that what we're going to do is anybody that's going to be interested in serving on the board, that he's going to be suggesting that we form, have a chance to meet with him and just kind of hear what that would entail and what that would look like in terms of responsibilities and things like that. So that would be over lunch. We're still finalizing all this, but I'll put it all on the website once it is final. And then, 5:30 that evening of the 18th, I would like for him to meet with all of the decision-making bodies, as he did the last time, and then another public presentation at 7 o'clock. So location is to be determined, but all of that should be finalized very soon. So hopefully by the end of this week, I've got all that out, and it will be on our website. Due to popular demand, farmer's market is going to expand, so it's going to go to the second and fourth Saturday of every month, so that's going to start in July. So we'll do the second Saturday, yeah, second Saturday in July and fourth Saturday in July, so that will go all the way up until October. That fourth Saturday in October may be, you know, up in the air just because of the weather, so we'll see how that goes. So that happens right here in our parking lot of our administrative building, and that is, it's always a good time, so come and check it out. It's from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. We've been doing a lot of IT upgrades this year, as council's well aware and was in the budget. What we've been working on is our phone upgrades. So we had allocated $14,000 to move all of our phones to a cloud-based system, and that was without the purchase of new phones. If we were going to purchase new phones, it was going to be estimated at $38,000. Now granted, all of these estimates were given ahead of the budget last year, so that was in the fall. So after everything was looked at, and they went through all of our phone lines and determined, you know, what was needed, what wasn't needed, did a full assessment, we found that we could get all new phones and move to the cloud for $18,000. So an extra $4,000 versus an extra $24,000 is going to get us new phones. And on a monthly basis, it was going to change our bill $100 across all departments. So that would also be moving our internet service as well. So I'm hoping that we're going to have savings in our capital budget from some other things. I'll have to see how it shakes out, but at this point, we should have some savings so that it covers that, and I wouldn't have to come back for the extra money, but fingers crossed for that. So that's really exciting that for an extra $4,000, we're going to end up with all new phones. Open enrollment is starting with the city's health insurance. Our city's health insurance went up 6%, but with some of the changes in personnel and some other things that were going on, the net increase to the city across the board was going to be less than, a little bit less than 4%. So that's about a $15,000 increase over health insurance costs from last year, just so that everybody knows. We are also...
That's in total?
That's in total, yes.
Wow, that's good.
So we're also going to offer employee-paid vision coverage as well. We were going to have to have too high of a participation rate for the city to be able to cover it, so it's a really good plan, and people can elect to do that at their own cost. And I think that for a family plan, it's like $12 a month, so it's pretty reasonable, and the benefits are pretty good. So you can get glasses every year if you want to, which is great. Most plans, it's every two years, so it's a really good plan. So we are working on that right now, so all of that, all of our health insurance will renew August 1st, as always. And then finally, we've been working on identifying some changes in our zoning code, so Jeff, our planning and zoning assistant, has been working on that. And I know that some of those are going to start to funnel their way through planning board this week, and then they will be coming to council, so the legislation is just going to keep coming. So I think that we went, we made it until August of last year without our first ordinance, and we just read the 13th one in June, so we're busy. So it's all positive stuff, so looking to make some really good changes, and everybody on council will see those coming through after they hit planning board. That's it for me.
Any questions for the city manager? Nick, Daryl?
With the health insurance, are we still in that consortium, that the pool to get the rates?
Yep, Center for Local Government, yep.
Good. On the phone system, is that tied in with our computer system? Is that, because the phone system is going to be like through the computer, right?
So it's going to, we had our own server here for that, and it's all going to go cloud-based now. So it's going to, it was going to cut down on the aging hardware that we were going to have to repurchase by moving it to a cloud-based system.
So in the long run, I'm going to save money on it.
Correct.
Okay.
The cloud-based, you get your updates done much easier than having someone on-site plugging them in and plugging a disk in and all that kind of stuff in your server, so it just seems like it's the best way to go.
Sure.
The only problem is they still have issues from time to time. They have outages and breakdowns and so forth, and we're on a cloud-based system at work, and it's one of those situations that a lot, and it works good, but sometimes it's a mess and to be expected, but usually they're very responsive, and our guys, I think, are out of Indianapolis, so they've got a whole team of technicians to work on instead of one or two guys trying to get help from somebody else, so it's the right way to go.
And the phones that we're buying, they're Polycom phones, so you can take those from one provider to another. Right now, we have Altogen phones, and I think that they're about 10 years old, but only Altogen can service them, so you can't go to a different service provider with those. So the phones that we have will be much more flexible, so they should allow us to use them for a much longer period of time than the current system that we have.
And the technology will be way newer.
How do we get such a substantial savings or reduction in price on the phones from $27,000 to $4,000?
So when we all met to go over all of the IT stuff last fall, our IT firm, Tech Advisors, had tried to give us loose numbers, so they brought in, it's not Tech Advisors that is providing the phone service, they use a different company for that. So once that company came in, they were able to put better numbers to it, which just happened to be much lower. So when they were giving us numbers, they said that a lot of them were probably going to be shot high, which is what you want. You want it to come down versus going up, so. Yeah, so I think that the numbers that they were using just formed this firm in the estimates.
I think it's good they were able to package it together because it just saves us a problem having to go back later on and then get phones. By the time you have the cloud system, two years old, the phones are 50 years old, we have to probably upgrade something to make it all connect.
Well, it's like the internet, our phones now at home are through the internet, and if the internet goes down, the phones go down. So it'll be the same, will it be the same kind of thing here if the internet goes down?
I'm not exactly sure how that would work.
Good guess.
But we had talked about creating some, we'd talked about possibly picking up a second internet service in case there was an outage with one service, we would have a backup service. We'd started talking about that when we started talking about the phones, but the cost right now, it wasn't smart. We haven't had problems in the past, especially with all of the upgrades that we're doing right now. So, I mean, we could always, we could have, we could have a power outage in the building and still be in the same kind of boat, you know, so.
But you got backup power, it should kick right up, right?
Yeah.
We got the generator in the back.
Yeah, I mean, it might not be seamless, though. I mean, you could still be down for a little bit before it takes everything, you know, to come back up. I mean, it's never foolproof, so.
Is it feasible to check for an UPS uninterrupted power source?
I can check.
I mean, if that's a...
And I'm not sure, I'm not sure what kind of backup power service we have in the building.
Well, if you don't have an UPS, you're going to lose it for about 10 seconds.
Yeah. I'll check on that.
Because UPS, they're not normally too expensive for something that doesn't require that much power. And that would service the police department, whole building, right? That might be something we'll get to.
And we may have it. I'm just not sure yet. It's one of those bridges I hadn't crossed yet.
Any more discussion for the city manager?
Are we going to get a different voice on the answering machine, other than the last city manager?
Well, that's the thing is, that's the thing is, nobody really knows how to change it.
Oh, really?
So that's part of the problem, is the two people that had all that knowledge left, so. So it's been a challenge, and when I tried to call the phone system company to get access to that, they told me that I had to go through our internet service company that is dealing with the phones, and that company has been slightly problematic, so.
That's hard to believe, huh?
It hasn't changed. But it will. We'll get there.
We'll put that as one of our city manager goals for next year.
There you go.
Change the voicemail.
Yeah. Updated voices on the phones, please.
Any more discussion?
That's all I have.
Thank you for the report, Melissa. Committee reports, Service Committee. You know what, here? Donna. We'll pass on that one. Safety?
I just have a few notes regarding tornado sirens. As a safety committee, we'll be looking into plans and devices concerning tornado safety. We'll do a comprehensive look at all options. We'll use data statistics and look at new technology compared to sirens. We'll determine if we really need them. That's kind of been up in the air in the city. We haven't had one for 20 years. The tornado nearby kind of created a lot of angst among people that think we need them. So I want to go ahead and investigate and look at all the options, as like last meeting, we determined that we need to make sure we educate people any way we can, websites, newsletters we send out, make sure that people know about hyperreach and other things they can do. You know, the bottom line with all safety is it comes down to the individual citizen that you have to kind of read some of the stuff that's put out. You have to sign up for hyperreach. I mean, it's simple. You know, you can do things, you know, your television and radios are a good source. Cell phones, you know, of course, that's with hyperreach. You can buy weather radios that have a real loud alarm that goes off. I had one in my garage for years. I'd be outside, I could hear it outside anywhere in the yard. So there's a lot of things, but we still want to look at the siren issue, and, you know, budgets are, you know, they're tough nowadays for cities. We've had so many cuts, and so after all this, we're going to look at, we'll determine. And in the meantime, we want to look at Sugar Creek Township, you know, over the past 20 years, we've had a lot of development around the high school, we've got Cable's Mill, we've got the new plat crossing the graveyard, you've got where our water tower is up in the township behind, in that Walmart area, Sugar Creek has a lot of development. So all the people that live in this area is the combination of Belburg and Sugar Creek. So we'll discuss some of that with Sugar Creek and see what, if they want to be interested in it. And, but I think we do need to take some time and just kind of brainstorm and just make sure that if we think we need it, we'll try to pursue it. The other thing is there's some possible grant money available, and we'll look into that. But the bottom line, you know, we want to make sure that there is a need for, that warrants spending money. And, you know, as technology changes, so does equipment. Trains no longer have cabooses, you know. Sirens, I haven't had a lot of people that deal with safety have a lot of enthusiasm about sirens, so, but we want to look at all that, and we'll come up with something, whether we do or don't, so. And that's all I have.
Thank you for it. Finance and audit, I can give a brief update on that. As you've heard me say a number of occasions, I'm very happy the audit's wrapped up so early in the year. By being audited through the state of Ohio, we oftentimes weren't concluded until late October, early... By being audited through the state of Ohio, we oftentimes work concluded until late October, early November. And while we trust our finance department led by our city manager, Melissa Dodd, and we think through the most loyal and honest people, it's nice to have the audit wrapped up and know that there's no findings, that things are in order, and that's the piece I really like to get it done. And not that we can use a hundred percent as a check to make sure the city's properly appropriating monies, but it's certainly a good indicator that we're doing things right. So congratulations to staff, and your first full audit, so it's nice to have it behind you.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Good stuff.
Community affairs?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. We are taking applications through the end of this week. Friday is the cutoff for an application for a temporary replacement to Mike Schwaler's seat on council, as he has moved up to mayor. This would be for the, fill out his term till the end of this year. So if the information is on the website, if anybody's interested in applying, look at the website and follow the directions. We will be scheduling interviews beginning July eighth with those who submit an application.
Good. Thank you, Elaine. Your old business. New business? Let's go to open discussion. Council first. Nick?
I don't think I have anything tonight, Mayor.
Thank you.
Oh, I just wanted to mention, Melissa, the alley that comes out from the dark, behind dark building and the floors, there's a stop sign there. And reached, there's a lot of traffic. Business is good, and that's good. But a lot of, when people turn to go up the hill, been a lot of tire squealing. And three or four of the neighbors have brought it to my attention that if we could look at it, if there's something with the road or, or if it's loose gravel. I'm not sure what's going on, but there's, you can see the squeal marks. And I don't know, it might be somebody just having fun, too.
That's what it sounds like.
I hope that's not what it is, but if you, if you don't mind, or check into that.
I do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Forrest. Daryl?
Yes, one, one item. Bellebrook Area Radio Club this past weekend conducted their annual field day. I had the, the unfortunate opportunity to go down and look at their activities that they, they did. It's, it's a great organization that served this community for a number of years here. They run the emergency communication system that we have in case of bad weather through, through the city, through the city. And it was interesting to watch them go through that, set up their antennas, set up their stations that they have for the, the, the running through of their communications check process that they have. Plus, we, we gave them a little bit of a, on the national level, because there were some government officials that went down and actually signed the visitation book. They got extra points for that. So that should, that's set them a little higher in terms of where they rate in terms of the, the field day exercises themselves. So good job, guys, seventy-three students.
Thanks for attending. I tried to get down there, but it was closed up when I got there. They're kind of pulling out of the park, so I missed it out, but I'm glad you were able to go. Elaine?
I was sick, I wanted to go, and I see it, but, yeah, those guys do a wonderful job. All behind the scenes mostly, so.
It's a big production.
Yes, it is. And, and they're always looking for people who are interested to join. I, I don't have anything further.
Thank you, Elaine. I don't have anything for tonight either. This opens the open discussion section, update people in the audience. I know we've got three attendees here that are new faces to Bellebrook. Can I invite or encourage them to come up and speak? If you do, you can take the microphone or the podium and provide your name and address, and you have up to five minutes. I guess that's electorally.
He'd hit the ceiling if he stood on that podium.
Yeah.
My name's Kyle Abel. I work for the Empower and Light. Just moved close to the area recently. We have community ambassadors in several communities throughout our service territory to just go to meetings, council meetings, school board meetings, be a point of contact for the community, kind of be a person to contact if there's any issues in the city, make comments we can look into. So I'm the new community ambassador for Bellebrook. I did Kettering before we moved, so I'm glad to be here and hope to help you if you need it. Thanks.
Kyle, welcome to Bellebrook. And I think history shows that some of our DPO community ambassadors have become members of this council. Donna Segalos and former Mayor Bob Baird, so you've got some big feet to follow. Go for it, do it. Thank you very much, welcome.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience care to speak out tonight? Okay. Seeing none, I want to thank and acknowledge the fine work of Louis, our cameraman. He's in the back, at least he got today's meeting started on time, so we appreciate that. Does anyone in this council have any matters to bring before the council yet tonight? Seeing none, I declare this meeting is adjourned.